Appreciate it.
We need, we need all, don't we?
Yeah.
I got this.
We all do.
Yeah.
All of it.
Thank you.
How are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
I'm well. You just let the punishment come to all of you.
Yeah, oh, that was an interesting one. We don't get it. How you doing? Oh, I mean, well, here's.
Fifty thousand broiler does. I think they have those little preoccupied before we can get to that. Now, I understand. They just, or you're here to get a certificate?
Just, alright, easy off.
Good morning, sir.
You got faith, Mr. Barber?
I do.
I do.
I've been having faith forty years, man. Haven't succeeded yet.
See, I, I've seen them win this.
I've seen them win three.
Okay. Uh, by the way, it's a hundred days till the vantage point.
Hundred days? Yeah, well, you'll have another, another little Barton on there.
Okay. What position is he playing?
Defensive end. Morning, Kenny.
How you doing, bud?
Morning, sir.
I, I understand.
I'll work, I'll work.
Yeah.
I think our face.
Awesome, okay.
It's just a lot.
Okay, appreciate it.
Morning.
Always worried about going to the park or going back. Looking off his chip.
How are you, sir?
It'd be hard not to laugh.
The doors, hopefully the doors closed.
Alright, it is nine o'clock. If you please rise, I have asked Mike Burns with Victory Church to open us in our.
Judge, I want to thank you and the commissioners for allowing us to have the national media prayer view this month. Well, thank you very much. Heavenly fathers, we come today to open up this court in this session. We remember the words on this wall up here and God, we trust. And Lord, we trust you, but we have to deal with the affairs of this world and this county and the system. And I pray today for the commissioners, for the judge, I pray for the citizens that will bring their cases and make their appeals. We just thank you and we ask you for wisdom today. We thank you for our county. We thank you for Van Zandt County. We thank you, Lord, for what it's meant to many of us for the years. And we thank you, Lord, that you will give us a great future in this county as these men and these women lead us. So again, we praise you and we thank you and we thank you again for your eyes upon us and your ears listening to us. And we thank you for helping us make the decisions we need to make today. Jesus name I pray, amen.
Amen. Alright, pledge to US flag.
Blue. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And if it break up, we're waiting for days while I nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
Honor of Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, you may have a seat. I would like to remind everybody to silence your cell phones, please, at this point in time. And we will now call this meeting to order and I will announce we did have a forum, all commissioners and myself are present. Uh, next we have general announcements. And first one is I'd like to, uh, talk about on Memorial Day, county will be closed to, in, uh, to honor those that have died in wars to protect us. And service will be held at the Veterans Memorial at ten AM on Monday. Please come and attend if you can find the time. Uh, no, uh, and that's what I'd like to make is I am working to start scheduling town hall meetings in the month of June. It'll be Tuesdays or Thursdays, one in each precinct. And so be looking, uh, for that announcement on those dates when we get those done. Uh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm glad you announced that. Uh, it's gonna be Van Zandt County by the numbers. It's going to be all about what our twenty twenty-five budget, uh, where, where the money comes from and where the money goes. And it's to help citizens understand the, the situations that we face and how the mon- the money gets spent. And, uh, and there'll be plenty of time for questions and answers and, and in that regard. Uh, next, uh, I've asked, uh, Ms. Curry to give us an update on the current status with Best Project.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, gentlemen. Uh, I'm pleased to announce that the best litigation is, uh, proceeding perhaps better than, than what I originally anticipated. Uh, we have today entered into another extension, uh, with the lawyers for Amador, uh, whereby they agree with our position. They one hundred percent agree with our position and agree not to bring batteries into our county, um, until the fire marshal has given his approval that they meet all of the testing, all of the requirements of all of the, um, provisions in, in the NFPA. I know a lot of folks have questioned the wisdom of the extensions, but the extensions give us absolutely everything we want. When it comes time for a hearing, if it does, the best outcome at that hearing is for a judge to say, no batteries until the fire marshal says they meet all the provisions of the NFPA. Right now, we have that order by agreement. We have everything a judge could give us possibly by agreement. In fact, they are agreeing with our position that we are right. We have the authority to impose those restrictions on them. Um, they have made no, um, they are not even purporting any longer that their batteries do qualify. So I'm very pleased with the state of the litigation. Um, we are in a great position. Um, these extensions not only save us the money of having litigation, bringing our experts here, having the litigation, but they give us absolutely everything we asked for.
And the extension is for two weeks?
Yes, this extension is for two weeks. We are in negotiation to try to find a, a date by which we can set a final hearing, um, that would be some time off. And the TRO would continue up till that, rather than doing it piece meal by two, two week increments.
Okay. Very good. Alright, are there any other general announcements? If not, we'll move on to.
Okay, I got a theme. I got, okay.
We got a presentation of anniversary service. Here's the service.
Dalton been with us. This sits five years. Uh, I think he was with the jail for a while then.
Yeah, it's been a total ten years.
You know, I had him as former supervisor.
On that.
Uh, we'll, we'll check you on that. It's been five years. So we're, we're taking the, he's a, he's a big part of what I call my family. Cause I look at them guys as my family. And I, I played a lot of them. Uh, he's, he's one of my leading patch guys. He, he takes care of a lot of that. And the club, I appreciate your service and here's your. And then here's your private team. And whoever, I just always.
Hold up your.
Yes. Thank you. I have to go. Did you go to the porch?
No. There you go.
Did you do more?
Thank you, Dalton, for coming out. Appreciate it all. Keep that. Alright, well, we'll move to item number three, public comments. Was any public comments submitted or none submitted? We'll move to item number four, consent agenda. Consent agenda are items considered routine by the commissioners court and will be enacted in one motion. There's no, uh, separate discussion on these items unless the county judge or commissioner requests an item be removed from consent and considered separately. Are there any items that need to be considered separately? If not, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'm like a motion.
Alright. Thank you. Somehow I, I got out without any, uh, pens, so, uh, Mitch Curtis and Bobby Phillips, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number five, we will now have a, a presentation by Jonathan Stewart with Grant Works about the ARPA grant status. Mr. Stewart is joining us by Zoom. He is connected. Do we have any audio? Christie, could you give me a pen, please? Thank you.
Christie. Hello, good morning, am I audible?
Yes, you're on, good morning, thank you.
Okay, well, it's good to be with you all. Um, just, uh, wo- work with me here. Am I allowed to share my screen here? And it would be present, presented on yours, so you could see it, is that correct?
That would be if, if the technology will allow it, yes, you can share it.
Okay, let me go to slideshow and then I will play from beginning and then, uh, let me share my screen here then, give me, sharing is not turned on. Uh, so that would need to be, uh, I guess granted by Scott. If not, I can, uh, oh, let me see, okay, now I can share. Okay, let me see here, I'm gonna go to this screen and then I'm gonna press uh, play. Can you see my screen?
Not yet.
Let's see, if it's this one.
So while we're working on the technology, let me give you the background of who Grant Works is. Uh, in twenty twenty-one or twenty-two, we received, uh, money from the federal government. It's called the, uh, uh, ARPA grant. And, uh, that grant, that money, it was roughly eleven million dollars, uh, came with a lot of stipulations that, on how it can be spent and what it can be used for. And in that process, uh, uh, we hired Grant Works to make sure that everything that we spent the money on complied with the federal regulations. Because if it didn't, then we would have to return the money and we didn't want to do that. So Grant Works has been with us all along since we got the money and has been, uh, every, every item that we have, uh, requested, uh, has gone through them to get approval to make sure it meets federal guidelines.
Okay, I'm not sure if, uh, you tell me, I'm gonna share it one more time and you tell me if you could see it here. Can you see this?
No, sir.
How about this? No?
Hold on.
Oh, uh, give me a second, share. There we go. Now.
Now, now we got a screen.
Okay. Okay, wait, can you see this now? Cause I have two screens and I'm not, I, I can't see you guys. You can see the screen, correct?
We can see your PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, let's kick, let's, let's kick it off here, okay. Uh, as Judge just laid out, yes, we've been, uh, monitoring the grant funding that has been provided from ARPA, federal government and helping Van Zandt throughout the process with, uh, request for proposals, request for qualification, making sure that it meets all of the American Rescue Plan Act guidelines, uh, treasury guidelines, the federal requirements, uh, in the form of the two CFR two hundred requirements. Um, and Van Zandt has done a fantastic job. Um, so let's get started. So as a judge also said, you have received, the county has received a budget of around eleven million, as you can see on here, around ten point nine million. Um, this past, uh, April thirtieth was the date by which all funding must be obligated by, um, or at least submitted into the treasury portal. Um, so we did that. Van Zandt has obligated all of that funding, so all of that funding will be spent. You have, there are certain counties, cities, municipalities all across the country that have not obligated by the certain deadline and they would return that money back, um, which is unfortunate. However, Van Zandt has obligated and, um, signed contracts for all of those, uh, uh, funding, uh, in the amount of the ten point nine, uh, million. The total spent to date is just over eight million. Okay, the number of projects is ten, the number of projects completed is five and the projects that are ongoing is five. On here is just, it's just showing some sub awards that were issued to, uh, um, different, uh, uh, subcontractors, uh, co-file technologies, Grant Works, us being one of them as well. So the use of the ARPA funds, there are many, uh, uses that, uh, American Rescue Plan Act allows for. Um, the main one that, uh, Van Zandt County has utilized is an eligibility category called revenue replacement. Revenue replacement basically means as a result of COVID, what revenue did the county, did any municipality lose? And then they could basically reimburse themselves, do projects, um, uh, improve, you know, government services in that regard. Um, and use, utilize the funding in a broad use. Um, so that basically makes up the revenue that was lost. Um, many counties, municipalities all across the country, uh, will be utilizing that type of eligibility category. And that again is specific to anything government services related and to make up that revenue loss. Uh, there is another, uh, eligibility category here, which is three point four, that's for public sector capacity. This is for any, uh, anything related to, um, public use, uh, service delivery, administrative needs, et cetera, hiring, uh, staff, uh, in this case for, um, uh, Van Zandt, it was a, I think, believe, I believe the co-file, um, uh, digit, digitization of the records. The last one here is the administrative expense, that's Grant Works, that is for oversight and compliance with ARPA, um, and that is a, an eligibility category, category called seven point one or labeled as seven point one. So the key focus areas of this, of, of this upgrade, uh, of the, uh, funding was emergency response upgrades, cybersecurity, remote work, record digitization, which I just, uh, mentioned before, and then grant administration and compliance. Um, this is my last slide, so this is the current, uh, amount, the budget and what is spent and that eligibility category and as well as the status. So L three Harris radio system, just over six million. But, oops, sorry about that. Uh, L three Harris radio system is just over six million, uh, budgeted there, uh, about three point six spent and that's still ongoing. Then there was the radio tower construction, uh, budget of three million. And then that is almost near completion of being spent and that is around two point nine. The co-file record digitization, that is almost seventy-five percent complete. Uh, eight hundred thirty-three thousand, six hundred seventy-eight thousand spent. Grant Works, that's us, four hundred sixty-one thousand, three hundred dollars, and then two hundred ninety thousand has, has been, uh, expended. The Dell dispatch equipment, that has been fully, uh, expended, obligated. That was eleven thousand dollars. The Ergo Flex systems, again, another one that has been completed in the amount of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred twenty-six dollars. Gold Star Electric setup, two thousand seven hundred seventy-five. The cybersecurity software, uh, sixty-seven thousand five hundred completed. The L three Harris system training, uh, that was twenty-two hundred dollars and three, uh, twenty-two or two thousand two hundred and three dollars, forty-one cents. And then the trot engineering support, um, which is three hundred seventy-four thousand and that is almost complete as well. And that's where, uh, as, as far as the latest, uh, project expenditure report, which was submitted on April thirtieth, uh, for the updates and current, uh, amounts, I would have to connect with, uh, Catherine if there are any changes on here, but we, we submit quarterly, so we'll be submitting another report to the, uh, Treasury Department on, I believe, June thirtieth. So that will be coming up pretty soon. Are there any questions? I will stop sharing so I could see you all.
Any questions?
I could send this to you as well, Judge, so you have it.
Okay. Well, very good, Jonathan, we thank you for sharing that information with us.
Sure, absolutely, anytime.
Alright. So that will conclude our presentation from Grant Works. I am going to move item number twelve up next to discuss and consider approval of order number five for equipment from L three Harris for the P twenty-five radio system because Barry Black is, uh, here to help, uh, confer with this, uh, item. And we, we have, it was in your, um, presentation, uh, the, put it in here? There it is. Anyway, um, hold on just a second, I'm gonna get to it, item number twelve. With the, this request is for, uh, twenty-six radios that, uh, which twenty-two of them are mobile radios, mobile being that they get installed into vehicles or they're used for, uh, in a shelter for inter-op. Uh, the inter-op is the feature where we have connections to, uh, uh, other entities, other counties, other cities. And it needs a radio to be dedicated to do that. And there's also, uh, in this, uh, particular order, uh, uh, for of, uh, what are called, uh, intrinsically safe portable radios, which are, can be used in a very dangerous situation such as a fire or, uh, uh, other situations like that. So Barry, you wanna, you wanna expound on what we've got here?
Um, thank you, Judge. Um, yes, yes, these are, these are radios that are being purchased. Some of these are gonna be used, um, you know, in the future for additional police vehicles or SO vehicles that are purchased, um, the mobiles that are, uh, is, but, um, I think the big thing here is per the L three Harris contract, the county has the ability to buy these radios at the price that was locked in at the time the contract was signed, which was back in twenty twenty-two, late twenty twenty-two. And since then, we've seen big increases in pricing, uh, you know, and a lot of things. And these radios have gone up in price as well. And so once the radio system is fully accepted, uh, final acceptance is issued, and this would be after cutover of the radio system, of course. Um, the pricing that the county has that they can leverage for new radio purchases goes away. And the list current price, uh, with, with some sort of a discount would come into play. And so buying these radios now will save a lot of money versus, you know, waiting just maybe six months down the road, uh, the price is gonna go up dramatically. So this is a, an opportunity for y'all to get some additional radios that y'all can use in the future. And then like the judge said, for interoperability, which, uh, we're working on that part of this, this radio project right now, uh, a lot of those radios are gonna be used, or some of those radios are gonna be used for that purpose.
Okay, and this is not, uh, we have not spent, uh, or allocated all of the, uh, money for, that was called the terminals, uh, the radios. We have roughly six hundred and fifty thousand still available to us in the contract, uh, to spend. So we're not adding anything to it, we're just asking to be able to, uh, purchase these twenty-six radios as part of the existing contract. So, any, any further questions?
And these are still all ARPA funds?
Yes, all, all ARPA funds. So, is there a motion to approve the, uh, uh, order number five for equipment from L three Harris for the P twenty-five radio system?
Motion to approve the order number five for that equipment?
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes. Thank you, Barry, appreciate your time.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice day.
Alright, alright, back to item number six. Uh, discuss and consider and approve the county judge to apply for the unclaimed property capital credits from the electric cooperatives to use for county for economic development. This is a program put on by the comptroller's office where, uh, refunds of electric service or deposits, uh, by, uh, utility companies that are not claimed, they, they are turned back in and are never, never claimed. And so that money is available and the comptroller allows us to apply for that money. And, but, but they're specific about how that money can be used. And, uh, it's, it's used for economic development and certain other services, uh, in the county. I believe one has to do with child welfare, welfare services. And, uh, so anyway, all we're doing is applying to say any of the money that's from Van Zandt County, come back to us. Uh, but you have to have the formal, uh, request to do that.
My motion.
Is there a motion? There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll see.
Alright, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number seven, discuss and consider authorizing payment of invoices of drury construction and debris tech for the service of removing vegetative debris from the county. For the service of removing vegetative debris from the county road right of ways under FEMA declared disaster. Uh, four, seven, eight, one, D R dash T X and authorize any budget transfers required to make these payments. Uh, reimbursement of these expenses are to be paid seventy-five percent FEMA and twenty-five percent T D M. This uh, as a result of the storms last May, a year ago, and June. Actually, it was April, May, and June, we had significant amount of tree uh trees that were down. And the county just did what's called cut and toss. We would cut them up, get them off the road, toss them into the ditches. And uh, uh, so. Because this disaster, or this was a disaster declaration for the state. And it met federal requirements, it it became a federal disaster. That means that we are eligible for reimbursement for picking up all this debris. And uh, and Texas uh FEMA typically only pays or reimburses you seventy-five percent. But the Texas Department of Emergency Management and Governor Abbott kicked in the other twenty-five percent. So this should be uh reimbursed to us uh a hundred percent. Uh, our initial estimates on how much debris need to be picked up was twelve thousand cubic yards. When it was all said and done, like finished up on May the ninth, uh. There was twenty, nearly twenty-eight thousand cubic yards, which was well over double what we anticipated. And again, we are not accustomed to estimated estimating cubic yards of debris, and that's part of the, part of, part of the issue. So the uh, the work was started on uh, I want to start March sixth, I believe, and it ended on May the ninth. And uh, we we picked out all that, and we have gotten the invoices that uh are in your packet show the total amount to be paid. And uh. If I want to take a wild guess. The total amount uh for the uh debris pickup. Was eight hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-four cents. These are the guys that came and used their trucks and picked up the debris, took it to the dump site. Uh, part of the FEMA requirements when you're doing a uh, uh. Operation like this is they require you to hire a monitoring company to monitor the people picking up. This is like a check and balance system. So the monitoring company would then uh, when the trucks came, they would have somebody out at the site where they're picking up the debris. And then they would have somebody at the at the dump site. And when they came to the dump site, uh, they would take a picture of the truck, they get a boom. Go up, take a picture of what's in the truck, and then uh, they would estimate what the capacity is of the. Or they know what the capacity of the truck is, they would estimate what the percentage of completion was. There was roughly six hundred and forty load tickets or deliveries uh in that time period. And uh, and to the debris site. So the monitoring company did all that, and they have incredible software, and they have it where all of the uh, uh tickets. Uh, are available and a database as well as links to online to pictures of the trucks. When they were full and when they were empty. They had to take pictures when the truck came back to make sure that it was completely emptied out. And so that's all to meet FEMA requirements. The cost for the monitoring company was two hundred and eight thousand, two dollars and sixty cents. Making the total amount for this uh, project, one million. Or uh, forty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and four cents. And uh, the way it works is uh, we have received the invoices for that amount right there from Debris Tech and from Drury Construction. We will need to pay the invoice, go ahead and pay them, and then we submit the claim to FEMA. And then FEMA will reimburse us the seventy-five percent, and we submit the claim to T D M, and they will reimburse us for the other. Uh, uh twenty-five percent. That process uh to get it submitted and get uh money back runs anywhere from sixty days to six months. From talking to Kaufman County, who went through the same process uh back in uh last year. And they got, they got reimbursed for their their work. So anyway. Uh, that is, that, is there any questions about? All of this?
I have a um, a little bit of a concern with where the dump site is.
We, we opened a temporary dump site in precinct one uh to uh. We had one, the first precinct, or the first dump site was off off of Highway nineteen, just south of Kent. That was one that this dr- drury construction had actually already had in place. Because they did pick pickup for Tech Dot last year. And they, they uh, the, to get a dump site, you have to go through T C E Q to make, get a permit from them. And the Texas Historical Commission has to approve it to make sure there's no uh ancient artifacts or whatever on there. So that that site was open, we used that site for the first uh month, or six weeks. And we did everything in precinct two and everything in precinct four to that dump site. So then uh, looking at the logistics, uh, and we we pay. Per per load based on how far it's try, it it takes to carry it, to deliver it. And most of all of these were under fifteen miles, and when it's under fifteen miles, the price is twenty-seven, twenty-nine seventy-five per cubic yard. When you get higher than uh fifteen miles, then the price goes up to thirty, roughly thirty-one dollars. And so uh, not only from a time standpoint, but also from a cost standpoint, it made sense to try to find. A second dump site up in uh precinct, for precinct one and precinct three. And we were, we were fortunate to uh, uh, through Commissioner uh Curtis to get. Uh, a site there in precinct one. And so that site has been uh opened, and that is where they have dumped everything from precinct one and three. And that's kept the total mileage down, making, meaning they can get more trips in. And uh, but that that will be uh, the the dump site is responsibility of Drury Construction. They're the ones that have to finish up the work and get, they got the permits, but as far as doing the burn. And uh, the debris will be burned.
My concern is that they pulled out.
Right.
And they have not disposed of the pile.
I believe.
That was a verbal agreement that they had with the landowner.
That they would do it? Okay.
And they, and they've also told them that they would come back and do it.
Okay.
And I'm concerned that if, you know what I'm concerned.
Right, okay. I will.
I don't mind, I don't know.
I will contact them and find out. Actually, I'll contact them to find out what the status is gonna be for both dump sites.
And if we, if we pay for it today, then we have no. Leverage.
Well, it won't get paid. We're gonna approve them today, but they're not gonna get paid. Uh, because uh, the Auditor's Office has to come up with the accounts on where this is gonna go and come from. And so uh, it'll be, you know, at least a couple more weeks, and they will probably come back then with a. Budget line item transfer or something.
Well, I appreciate the work that you did on it. There is no way we could handle what they handle.
Well, I I appreciate what Daryl easily did.
That's right.
He was, he was our man that we hired. And again, the the cost of Daryl for that time period is also part that we can submit to uh FEMA for reimbursement. Which we plan to do, as well as all the work on the other claims that uh Vicki McAllister is doing and. And uh, all the support staff are doing. Their hours will be reimbursed uh through the FEMA gram. So we just have to get all the claims submitted, and then then we'll start working on the uh. I think it's a total of five percent that can be submitted for, of the total amount, can be sent submitted for uh. Uh, reimbursement.
Well, I wanted to add that Keegan and and Lisa and Vicki McAllister did uh, months and months and months of work. And so I wanted to just personally thank them for the work they put in related to this process. It would have been, uh, it would have been impossible to to do also without their early work in uh, in setting this up.
In April, April was also part of it too.
That's right.
So.
Appreciate that.
Any further questions?
Uh, yeah, we're, they're they're gonna set up these accounts, but I thought in our discussions prior. Uh, there, there would have to be some substantive, uh, you know, emergency declaration in order to change the budget.
Uh, I'm not aware of uh. Of that, and again, that is what they have to come up with, and they're not prepared to do that.
Yeah, but that's, that's what our conversation was earlier, was that related to other, other items and action items. Uh, that if this wasn't in the budget, and it wasn't reasonably foreseeable uh in in uh, you know, September of last year. That it would not be possible to change the budget, especially when we knew that there was, you know, that this was coming. And so the budget uh necessarily should have been changed uh last year uh to to. Set aside funds are related to this. And so I'm interested to see how the the Auditor's Office is, is uh.
I I agree, you know, we've, we've. Uh, we've consulted with Kaufman County on how they did it. And they just set up a uh receivable line and an expense line related to this, this uh deal. Because as soon as they knew what the total cost was, they put that amount in a receivable line. And then they had the expense line that they would offset that. So again, there's a lot of.
Where did the money come from to put in it? Did it come from each precinct, other material?
They ain't got there yet. Yeah, that's my, that's gonna be my question. We gotta do a line, Adam, which Cliff said that should be deemed as an emergency according to past things. But where do we uh, where do we anticipate moving the money from?
That that's what we're waiting on the Auditor's Department to come up with, what the process is. And uh, I, I personally don't believe it needs, it needs to even be uh charged to the particular precincts, even though. You know, and and by the way, just so y'all know, uh. The total amount of uh debris pickup. Uh, was by uh split between the precincts as follows. Precinct one had roughly sixteen percent. Uh, precinct two, which we knew had the most, had forty uh, forty-four percent. Precinct three had right at twenty uh eight to twenty-nine percent, and precinct four had twelve percent.
I don't, I'm just gonna throw it out there. I don't think we can do it by precinct. It's a whole county because. I think I'm speaking for all four commissioners. We cannot get it out of our rodent, our rodent bridge budget. There, there's, there's no way um. I'm on my, I'm, there's seventy percent of mine.
I understand.
I think we had talked about that, but there's no way we can get it out of rodent bridge.
If it's required to come out of contingency, it would have to come out of the county's contingency, but at the present time has about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in there. But again, we're working on um, we're learning in this process, but. And again, they won't get paid until the auditor figures out where where we're gonna do it, and if they may require it, we. Declare an emergency meeting in order to allocate that money uh from our existing. We have the money in the bank, but we don't have it in the budget. And so, once the auditor comes up with that plan, then we'll approve the money.
So today, we're just authorizing the payment?
Authorizing the payment, correct. We're not actually going to be paying them until the, until the backend of it's completed.
Okay.
Why, why do we have to? Looking for the answer. Why do we have to go ahead and authorize the payment if we don't even know where the money's coming? I have to be able to know where the money's coming from before I authorize the payment.
Okay.
You understand what I'm saying?
Well, I'm not opposed. Drury uh construction and debris tech should not be held hostage.
No, correct.
You know, so.
But, but I mean, if we do this.
Sure, no, I understand. Uh, so I I guess what you're saying is, is that while we can authorize the, the, while you recommend authorizing. The uh payment of these invoices, you don't, you don't give a blanket approval to where that money comes from.
Exactly. I don't, I'm, I'm not gonna say that, that I agree with them just because they choose to, to take it out of my rodent bridge material.
Right.
Because I don't have the money either.
Right.
Yeah.
And again, it, it cannot be paid until we get uh that resolved.
Okay, so once, once they decide, then it comes back to us.
The auditors will have to submit that uh, either budget transfer or however method we're going to pay for. And and that's still in the works.
So we're in agreement that we don't pay for things that we don't have money to pay for?
Well, we have money.
He's sliding in a point about something else. He's, yeah.
We're all sliding forth about something.
Okay.
Well, but where we're at is like, we have had a problem before. That we had to back off of, and now we have the same situation in front of us. And we're trying to.
Well, if, and again, I'm not sure if the invoices have to be paid in order to submit the claim to FEMA. But I don't uh, uh, you know, we have the invoices and we're gonna work, we're working on submitting the claim now. But the intent is to get it submitted in the next two or three weeks so that the process can start. And we have all of our reimbursement before the end of the fiscal year.
I'm okay with approving the payment. I, I think, unlike Cliff, I don't think we can hold him hostage. I think.
I don't think we should penalize the two companies that did excellent job for us uh in that regard.
It was a massive amount of work.
Yeah.
I make a motion to authorize the payment of invoices to Drury and Debris Tech for those services removing those vegetation.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, motion may say. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, with the caveat that uh, before a- any money is moved, removed from the precinct's individual budgets. That uh, that uh, we have the ability to have discussion related to that.
But it can't, it can't be moved without discussion.
Thank you.
Without approval.
Well, yeah, yeah.
I thought the record was good.
For the record, yes, it can be moved without Commissioner Court approval. All right, uh, all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number eight, discuss, consider hiring Tommy Forge. For the Veteran Service Officer position.
Uh, yeah, come, come up, Tommy. Uh, we had uh an opportunity to uh, we, we uh, actually, our Human Resources Department did yeoman's work. Putting out applications and putting out their requests. Take the uh, take the podium there, Tommy, if you would. Um, and uh, we took in uh, applications, we reviewed those. Um, Mr. Phillips and I were the, are the liaisons for the Veterans uh Group. And 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 so we interviewed uh applicants and uh it. We would like to submit to, for full court consideration, uh Tommy. Uh, we learned in his application process that. The, the very hard work that uh, that it takes for an individual to receive. Information and approvals and acceptance by the Veterans Administration for uh, for different claims. And disability claims, et cetera. He walked through those himself without help. And so uh, not only has he, and he was the, he was the one applicant that not only has the direct experience. And what we believe uh, the veterans of Van Zant County need, uh, he did it. That's how he got his uh, his experience. And he's a, a member of uh, of a local veterans group. That this last week, this last weekend uh had a uh, had a gathering down there at, at in Canton. And so I wanted to give Tommy an opportunity to say a few words related to his background and also to what he is involved in here. And then we'd, I'd like to submit Bobby Phillips, and I would like to submit him for Commissioner's Court approval. Uh, our current um, our, our current uh officer i- in this position. Is uh, is leaving at the end of this month, and so we wanted to, you know, we, we definitely needed a Veteran Service Officer in Van Zant County. And we would like to submit Tommy, Bobby and I would like to submit Tommy uh for that position beginning at the end of this month.
And you know, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was not aware of what all that they did until talking with Tommy. Uh, he was, he, he has a uh wealth, I guess you could say, of knowledge about it. Because of the steps that he went through to get his. And I just, I'm like Cliff, I feel like that this guy right here has the knowledge. And I feel like he will do us a great job.
Yeah, if you would introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your background and and uh, what you aim to do in this position.
So Tommy Ford, years from the Houston area. Uh, I've been in public service for about forty plus years. Started out in fire department in the med, went to the military, became a police officer. Uh, been a senior dispatcher for uh non-farm service. Uh, I worked for a progress, real sand. Uh, I took everything on my own for eighteen years. Be able to get a hundred percent disability term in total, and it was a lot of work. I did a lot of research, a lot of things on my own, you know, just going and them saying, no, you can't, or I said, no, I'm going to. So I mean, I did everything from sending my kids to Texas A and M to Baylor, all on the uh militaries. Dimes, and it was all free for them. I'm in school myself, got a couple of degrees and they said I could, so I went. And I, I guess one more thing, just important. And I, I guess one more thing is important. Uh, so being, I've only been here for about fourteen months. My original goal before this VSO position came to me, uh, I came here to build a retreat for veterans in first apartment before I even knew about the VSO position. So that was something that's in my heart and I'm ready.
Uh, are there uh different accreditations that you're interested in in pursuing?
Yes, the Texas Veterans Commission is the one that oversees the accreditation for being a VSO. There's other ones, there are certificates, you know, that the BFW has, that other organizations have. Uh, my, another goal that I've set for myself for Ohio on Saturday is my goal is that two to five years to be the best VSO in Texas.
Well, uh, are are there automations or improvements that you're recommending for the VSO uh uh here in Benzette?
Yeah, I think researching, you know, whether it be in Tyler VA, whether it be in the uh Greenville VA, uh, whether it be in Dallas VA and just get, you know, the kind of what another commissioner's saying, some people don't know what we can do. Some people don't know what is offered, you know, how to do it, don't know how, there is paperwork to follow and can get things.
And uh, it currently, what are the hours uh at the VSO that it's open?
Saturday.
What hours is the, is the veteran service office open here?
Oh, so Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight to twelve.
Uh, do you have intent to uh to change that a bit or offer some evening hours?
Yes, so my goal is to do eight thirty to twelve thirty every day, Monday to Friday, and Wednesdays do it. I haven't decided yet. Three thirty to eight thirty.
Right, right. So, so we, uh, after our uh discussion with him, uh, we believe that that Tommy is, is gonna be great for Benzette County. And so I would uh make the motion uh to hire uh Tommy for the veteran service officer position beginning June first of of this year uh on the retiring of our current VSO.
Uh, I'll second that.
Who has served our current VSO, has been there for decades. Uh, you know, he's done great work for us. And so we want to continue that tradition in in Benzette County.
All right, motion has been made. Second, any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion pass. Thank you. Congratulations, Tommy. And just to let you know, we will be recognizing and honoring uh Harry Fonten, who is the current uh veteran service officer for his years of service. It'll be happening at the next commissioner court meeting. All right, item number eight or nine, discuss to consider replat of White Pine's estates located on private road fifty-eight oh eight in precinct one.
I need to um ask for a twenty day extension on that.
Okay. In other words, uh, table this?
Yeah, it's gonna have to be replatted and um.
No, we can't table it. We have to, we have to approve an extension.
Proven extension, okay.
And I can't make the motion on that because I'm.
I'll motion to approve an extension.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion has been made and second, second Bobby Phillips uh to uh extend, what are we extending by twenty days?
Uh, submitting a plat revision.
Okay. All right. So, uh, any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ten, discuss to consider replat of lot twenty-nine of Acorn Estates located in Benzette County Road twenty-seven fifteen in precinct two.
Uh, on this, uh, on this replat here in precinct two, all the requirements have been met. Uh, and and there's been uh, you know, a second meeting related to this. Uh, the, the lots uh that are surrounding it have received their, their cards uh indicating if they don't want to, if they don't approve this replat of this, this is just all state subdivision regulation stuff. And they've complied with all that. Now, the two lots, it was a five acre lot and it's gonna be broken down to one point four seven acres and three point five five acres. So they both exceed the one acre. They both have county road frontage and they have uh, they've complied. The fire marshal has gone out there. Um, he took some special dust and and approved it, you know, he did this, this special stuff. Yeah, it's, it's very, it's very creative.
Angel, angel dust?
Angel dust, yeah, the special fire marshal angel dust. And uh, uh, the electric and water, um, so everybody has approved this. And so I, I would ask and make the motion to approve the replat of White Pine Estates, uh, or right, I'm sorry, Acorn Estates, uh, of lot twenty-nine in uh precinct number two.
I'll second that. I'll second it.
All right, motion been made by actually bring second by.
You have to ask him.
Curtis, any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes. Item number. Uh.
See, that's the problem I was having.
Eleven. Discuss and consider approving the Redding subdivision plant located in Benzette County Road forty-seven hundred in precinct four.
This is my easiest one I've had in my two and a half years. Uh, it's a tier two subdivision. There's four lots, three acre, one acre, one acre, two and a half acres. They all have county road fronts. They've all met the requirements and I've uh motion to approve the Redding subdivision in precinct four.
Second.
Motion has been made and second, is there any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number thirteen, discuss to consider updating the Benzette County flood damage prevention ordinance and designate a floodplain administrator. Uh, this was being handled by Virgil Melton in the past. And uh, I was unaware of the, the, the whole process until I, I was getting calls from somebody who was wanting to know if they needed a permit for flood, floodplain. And they were in a subdivision and it, it got kind of messy. And so I did further, further research and whatnot. And I found out that our original uh resolution to join this, part of this is uh, this plan has to be in place in order uh to uh allow the uh people to get National Flood Insurance Program. Uh, and we have this permit in place and you can get uh flood insurance from the National Flood Insurance Program. Uh, and that's all through FEMA, okay? And so that's why it's been in place. Ours, uh, this resolution was signed in May of uh two thousand, year two thousand. I don't even know who that county judge is. The signature, I can't read it. And the actual um, uh, ordinance or the plan that we put together, it's called the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, was uh signed by Judge Rita Coaches in two thousand and ten. So it's been fifteen years since this, but this has been updated. I've spoken with uh Kaufman County who revised theirs uh just in uh uh effective on January first, twenty twenty-three, because FEMA had implemented additional requirements and everybody's needing to be changed. We haven't changed ours. So also, uh, the county judges are responsible for the floodplain uh management and uh supposed to appoint a uh, a plant administrator. And that was appointed to Virgil. Virgil's not here. I'm gonna make this simple and say I will volunteer to be the floodplain administrator and to get the new, the ordinance updated uh if the commissioner court so desires.
Judge, I think there was a one actually done when I was over there, when I was in the commissioner's office, because I was handling all of that. And I think, I mean, I, I didn't know if this was gonna be on here, but I think that there's another one that.
Okay.
Judge has laid off on, because I was the one doing all the floodplain stuff.
Well, it, the, the new requirements came in after twenty twenty, so we're gonna need to update whatever it is we have. This is what Keegan had, this one uh from twenty ten. So if you can help me find the current one.
Yeah.
Uh, but most likely, I'm just going to take the Kaufman County one and modify it to fit our needs. Uh, if it's not, uh, they're probably a whole lot more sophisticated than than what we need, but.
So are you gonna move your maps over?
I have a map from EdCog.
You have all the maps. You should have like twenty or thirty maps.
I said the map, you'll sell and.
Okay, we need to find those maps.
Okay, I have all, I took all the maps out of the fifth floor jail and I indexed them and boxed them up. So if they were up there, then they're in the box and I, I would pull the index out and see if we can find it. But I got an updated map from uh, uh, EdCog uh that shows the floodplain areas.
Okay, but the maps, I think there's probably one, maybe was there a twenty, fifteen? And each, each map has a different section. And so all those maps need to be where we can get them.
All right, I'll work on that too. So is there a motion to designate uh the judge as a floodplain administrator and to allow him to uh uh work on updating the ordinance, the current ordinance that we have?
I'd motion that. I'll make that motion to county judge as our, as our floodplain administrator and work on that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Again, I'll, I'll bring all of this back to the court to approve once, once we get it all. Thank you for that additional information. It may be quite helpful. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes. Item number fourteen is discuss to consider updating the currents of salvage, wrecking and junkyard ordinance.
Uh, yeah, the uh fire marshal, we've been working on this. Um, I, I received a uh, a document yesterday uh with some changes on it. I worked on that yesterday and this morning and finished that up and sent that back. Um, I think we should discuss it um and and talk about uh what we want to do related to uh to updating that salvage wrecking junkyard. And the fire marshal's here and wondered if you might say a few words related to this.
Morning, work. Yeah, thank you for your time. So uh, just to context, this, this issue came up, I think it was the last commissioner's court meeting. There was a, a salvage wrecking yard that was coming up for permit and y'all were, you know, it was in Commissioner Phillips precinct and basically there was no documentation saying that anybody had looked at it, it still exists. Someone just came and built some big workout. Um, so he, he called me and asked me to go look at it. It definitely needed a lot of work. And so I got the, the current ordinances from uh, from Keegan and uh it was just three pieces of paper with kind of like a lot of words on it. It didn't really tell you what they needed to comply to. Um, so I, I was hoping to have this to y'all a lot earlier, but when you look at every commissioner and the judge uh and uh Mrs. Curry has it uh to review, it's about twelve to fifteen pages long. But it's very detailed about what they have to do and what they have to comply with. And just to let you know, I didn't make anything up. Everything came out of Texas traffic, the transportation code or Texas administrative code or Texas government code. One of the things I liked about this particular in my research is uh, as we've all discussed, with most situations, we can't like zone, tell people where they can and can't go. Uh, but we're in, in salvage junk and wrecking yards, we're actually allowed to, if someone is proposing a new site, we have to mail like churches, schools, things like that. And then they have the opportunity to dispute whether or not it gets built there. Uh, so it's just a much more formalized, efficient process. They're not having to go to Keegan's office and then come to my office and flip back to back and forth. So before my, but the goal will be at the end of this, the salvage, wrecking and junkyard operators will know exactly what they have to do. And then before it ever comes before the commissioner's court, you will have documentation in your hands showing that they are either in compliance or they're not compliant.
One of the primary uh changes in this is that rather than coming to the commissioner's court for the application process, they start in the fire marshal's office. And once the fire marshal has uh determined that they have met those rules, uh, then, then they bring it before the commissioner's court related to that permit. And I, I did redline that document that you have uh in, in Word and and I'll send it over to uh the district attorney for, for her additional review. Uh, and then you can forward it on to any of the other parties. So I, I, I try not to send everything to all the commissioners, you know.
Yeah, no, so uh, in separate emails, so that I didn't uh, I, I didn't get too many people involved. I said, every commissioner and Mrs. Curry, I forgot to send it to you and whoever, but I need to send one to Mrs. Paul. So every commissioner.
I'll send my red sign.
And if, and if you want us to give uh Keegan that redline, then uh we can go for it. So we could talk about it. I was hoping that we could vote on it today, but there, there's too much in there. Um, so if you, if you even opened the email, you just saw it was twelve to fifteen pages long. It's, it's too much information to digest. So um, I, I fully expect this one to get tabled. Um, but that, that's, I just wanted to give you my goal. And all, everything I wrote is suggestions. So if Keegan doesn't want to move to my office, that's, that's perfectly fine. I, I took, because I was the, I was the drafter of the op, of the, of the ordinance. I kind of took some, I took some, I took some liberties. So uh, these are all suggestions. None of them are, are like, it has to be this way.
So it's gonna work kind of like our easement, easement for the utility easement or the utility process that there would just be a form they fill out and it gets submitted to the commissioner's court to approve and uh.
Yeah, well, in this one, uh, the way that I have this proposed, right now, the salvage wrecking yards are starting with Keegan. They don't ask to pay the work from her. And then it was never really coming to the fire marshal's office. I don't, I don't know what the process was. I don't know if there really was a process. He's literally just created the process. So it will start at the fire marshal's office with, you know, the applications, doing all the inspections, everything else like that. It won't come to commissioner's court until I'm submitting a letter saying it is in compliance or it's not in compliance.
Because there are requirements for an eight foot fence of, of irctone, uh, no- nothing stacked above uh eight feet unless it's farm equipment. There are a lot of things like that, that uh, you know, that he can, because he's not really doing anything, you know? He can just swing by out there and just take a quick look. All right, that was insatiable.
And, and that's what, that's what on the last, I had asked him to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, is go by, have to look at it, talk to him.
And, and just like, just like the abatement issues, the fire inspection issues that were happening, they generally didn't know. Right? So I went and talked to that, then that day, and that day they were sending me pictures of stuff that I'd asked them.
I thought they were weed eating and all of that, that same day.
And they, they sent me a detailed email, like every line, I think I'd given them about fifteen or seventeen things that they needed to complete. Every single day and they said, will I paint this day? We'll have it painted this day, right? So once they knew like what the requirement was, they did it. So if we have this documented now and then they know that there's, the, the, the follow-up on that is that uh what I, what I think in some cases happening is they're, maybe they're doing it once a year when they know it's permit time. But this needs to be a continuous process. So again, come budget time, I'm gonna need the enforcement action of that to make root, you know, routine inspections throughout the year.
We identified how many other salvage, wrecking, junkyards?
So that, that's another issue. Any regular permits, do you think you get in here two? So there are only two, two permitted salvage wrecking and junkyards in all of Benzette County.
Right. But there are more than two, right?
Alleged, I would allege to say that there are more than two.
Yeah.
Salvage, wrecking and junkyards of Benzette County.
So, but yeah, it would be an education process for all two.
And that's how everything, I, I, a lot of this stuff, I'm not big on any choosing. Commissioner Phillips called me on this one, right? So once I hit it, all right, let's attack them. Uh, but everything always starts with education, always, always over.
Does, does this, does this include like the scrap yards?
Yes, sir. Yes, so you'll see it in that, like, there's a specific definition for what junk is, a specific definition for wrecking is, what salvage is. Uh, so junk is not a language term, like that is a definition of what that is.
So we have regulation for people that collect junk?
Yes, sir.
Abstaining. We need to talk.
But that, that, that was it. I'm trying to streamline the process and just make it consistent and let the, let the people know exactly what the requirements are, what the process are. So it'll stream, it'll streamline the process for the, for the owners and for the commissioner's court.
Yeah. Did you, Mr. Tom, did you have something?
Uh, yeah, very, very briefly. Uh, Kevin's done a great job drafting this. I did, like y'all, I got it yesterday afternoon. Um, and had done, went through on it, haven't gotten into all the details, but um, it looks very, very good to me. My concern at this point, the issue that I'm uh researching, and we've talked about this, because our old ordinance was so vague and, and I'll say.
Um. Watch from nineteen eighty-eight.
And the law was very different. Yes, sir. Um. If, if we consider this an amendment, we do not have to have a public hearing. If it is a new ordinance, we do have to have a public hearing. You know, to be safe, so that it's never challenged. My recommendation in the end may be that we have, that we post, that we publish the notice in the newspaper and have a public hearing before it's considered for adoption. Um, but I want to be able to tell you whether I believe that's absolutely required um, or whether I think it would just be a safe practice so that it cannot be. um or whether I think it would just be a safe practice so that it cannot be um challenged in the future. So I may have a recommendation that we have a public hearing and public notice on it before the court considers it.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the big questions, because I haven't got to look at. So we're all kind of in agreement that there's probably more than two salvage and wrecking yards out there. So, you know, do I consider them a new, a new salvage yard, even though they've been there for ten years? Uh those are all discussions that we're gonna have to have about how we treat those. And I'm in agreement with Mrs. Curry in that we go ahead and I, I don't know what the formal process is, but just we, we make this as a new ordinance. And we do all the, the things that we're supposed to do, per, per Texas Government Code. And just make a, an ironclad new ordinance so that nobody can say, well, this was, this wasn't an amendment, this was a complete change and it goes back. Cause there's civil and criminal on both of these. You'll, you'll see that there's civil remedies and, and criminal remedies uh for both, so.
And by definition, it cannot apply to any uh salvage, wrecking, junkyard in existence prior to nineteen eighty-seven.
Correct.
Unless they expand.
And it goes, you'll see in that detail, it, it details all that stuff.
Okay, do we need to schedule a workshop for this?
Well, that's what the, the workshop, I had scheduled a workshop thinking that I wouldn't have to spend so much time on it. I was gonna have this to y'all by, by last Friday.
Mm-hmm.
Uh but yes, if, if we, if, if we can table this one now.
Okay.
Give y'all the two weeks to read over it, give time for Mrs. Curry to, to read over it. We all come together with our redlines and come up with the final version. I think, I think two weeks is long enough to come up with the final version and we can actually. And then go through the public, go through all the public hearing parts of it.
Should, I don't, okay, we'll, we'll schedule a workshop.
Explain the nineteen eighty-seven to me again, what did you say about nineteen eighty-seven?
If a salvage, if they were in business prior to nineteen eighty-seven, they don't have to follow these regulations unless they expand.
Grandfathered in.
And the question's whether or not they expanded after eighty-seven as well, there could be some gray area there if they were in business in eighty-seven.
The, the tax assessor has given me uh the access to their, they do fly, you know, they do fly over there every year. And so I can pull up year by year and air, so I can go all the way back to nineteen eighty-seven and see if they've expanded anywhere. If anytime they expanded after nineteen eighty-seven, they flipped it.
They're not grandfathered even longer.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So motion to table?
All right.
Kevin, thanks for.
Thank you.
Uh Tom, thank you too.
There's that in.
I'll say.
All right, uh.
Brandon, my, my fault.
Okay. Motion table by Brandon, uh seconded by, by Commissioner Phillips, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign, motion passes. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider line item transfer fifteen thousand dollars from contingency line zero two one six two one eight hundred to equipment rental line zero two one uh six two one forty-six one.
It is, um I'm, I'm in need of a drum vibratory roller to stabilize um road base width, and I don't have one on my yard, so I'm gonna rent one um from Ronald Coe. If y'all approve this, let me know. Rent a, a drum roller, vibratory roller eighty-four inch.
How long are you gonna rent it?
Three months right now.
Three months, okay. All right.
And their, their agreement is um if you decide to purchase that piece of equipment, they take about, about ninety percent of what's around it was, it comes off of the price. So it's like a down, it's almost like a down payment on it, so.
Okay. All right, is there a motion?
I'm making motions.
All right, is there a second?
Can I second my own, I'll second it, yeah, I don't know if I can move on to another one.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion, not all those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign, motion passes. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-five line item transfers. Okay, this is, this is normally a consent agenda item, is there anything to discuss um of the transfers listed, which includes the uh, the one just mentioned? Actually, if not, all those in favor say aye. Wait, I've got a motion then, all right. Commissioner Bart? As, as motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Williams, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign, if anybody's been watching the house down in Austin uh it's, it's like an auctioneer environment. Item number uh seventeen, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. Is there any, any discussion on that? If not, is there a motion to approve county bills?
I'm like motion to approve.
Commissioner Phillips, uh motions, is there a second?
Second.
Uh Commissioner Williams, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign, motion passes. Item number eighteen, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
There's a motion made in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh motion passes at ten oh eight, we are, we are adjourned.
Second.
Bobby.
Bobby.
Lee.
I'm with.
Come on.
Congratulations. I mean, it's part of the lawsuit. There you go. Over every large season.
I got it. Appreciate it.
No more.
Yeah.
Almost.
Come back.
So what does a drum roller cost now?
I ran one on once over a hundred.
Over a hundred?
Yes, close to it.
Did you check, see if any other precincts have one that, that on you?